Okay, great. Yeah, Dahlia and Elizabeth are both doing, running errands.
She's inside.
Yeah, she's eating. Has it set so we can adjust it, right? Okay, Michael, if you want to, go ahead. And so just, just by way of introduction, Michael's going to run through the changes to the program this year. We're going to talk about the recess issue which percolated and then we'll have time for discussion.
All right. Good afternoon. I figured if it's acceptable, I'll spend a minute or two just talking a little bit about the environment in which we will be operating, or at least what we know about the environment in which we'll be operating for the next General Assembly session. Obviously, you had the election in November. You had a clear, clear vote on the governor's race, so you do have a governor-elect, nor them. I think what you'll expect to see with that is a degree of continuity between the previous administration and the current administration. A lot of the positions that they had been talking about are very similar to what the McAuliffe administration had been talking about, changes to assessments and those types of things. So I don't think you'll see a significant change from the, from the executive level. You also have the retirement of Dr. Steve Staples as Superintendent of Public Instruction. You'll have probably an interim appointment and then a permanent appointment, just given the timing of his retirement. Dr. Steve Constantino, who's in the department, is one of the names that I've heard mentioned as a possibility. There are others, but he's one that I've heard mentioned probably more than anybody else. So in terms of the executive branch, that's what you have. On the Senate, obviously, the Senate didn't have an election, so that remains a 21-19 split, Republicans, Democrats. The House is where you're going to see the biggest change, obviously. And even today, I cannot tell you what the House will look like. I think, starting at noon today, there were some canvassing activities going on. There are four races where the margin, there's actually two races where the margin's under 100 votes, but there are four races where there's a pretty significant recount going on. One race was within 13 votes. So, right now, if everything stays exactly where it is, you'd have 51, a 51-49 split, Republicans and Democrats. No matter what happens, you're going to see very significant changes in the House. When you look at the committees that we pay attention to, House Education lost seven of its 22 members. So you're going to have a full third of that committee is going to be new, will be new people. Same with House Appropriations, seven of 22 members are moving on from that committee. So you will see some pretty significant turnover among the people that we deal with on a fairly regular basis. The, one of the three, or the House Appropriations Subcommittee Chair for the K-12 Subcommittee, he's no longer in the House. And two of the three chairmen on House Education, Higher Education and Education Innovation are no longer in the House. So you're going to see some changes in leadership, no matter what, you know, kind of, kind of how things, how things shake out. That gives you the background of what we're going to be dealing with in terms of the next General Assembly session and in terms of policymaking. So that leads me into the draft of the 2018 legislative program. As, I mean, you, you all have been through this process a number of times. There's a good deal of continuity from year to year, in terms of what the program does and what the program says. There's a lot of places where you'll see some changes. Some changes are stylistic, it's just, you know, the phrasing of something didn't look quite right. Sometimes issues are no longer of importance. There are issues in here that you probably can trace back to Dr. Dale, you can probably trace back to Dr. Garza. So you, there were some issues that do kind of linger in the program, and we try to make recommendations to prune those out. You have the full draft. You know, we always do the, the full markup draft, so you can see everything that's changed, all the places where wording has been added, subtracted. I will highlight, I'll go through, maybe highlight half a dozen, and then if anybody has questions on the specifics, we can go through those, but I'll just highlight a few places where there's been some changes. The first one is, is page one. It's the Joint Legislative Priority Position. You already had a pretty robust discussion about that at the joint meeting with the county. The county, not reflected in this draft, the county did have some recommendations, really more to just change the order in which some of the bullets were placed. It really didn't change the substance of the positions at all, they just kind of wanted to reconfigure, you know, kind of what they were prioritizing. Flip over to position C on attendance and truancy on page three. There's actually no change in that language, but I didn't want to highlight that issue because there's been some changes in reporting requirements for attendance and truancy, and this may very well become a legislative issue this, this upcoming year, because those reporting requirements are pretty significant in terms of what we have to report and the types of interventions that are there. So that maybe, may come up as a discussion point during the next session, I just wanted to highlight that. I'm going to flip you all the way to position S, which is Standards of Accreditation and Standards of Learning. When you look through this position, you're going to see a lot of, a lot of strike-through and a lot of, a lot of underline. What we tried to do with this position is really try to streamline what we're talking about, really keeps the themes of the types of work that the State Board of Education and the SOUL Innovation Committee are going through, in terms of reducing numbers of assessments, changing the mix of assessments, not simply relying only on standardized multiple-choice tests, but moving towards things like performance-based assessments and, and other kinds of substitutes. So that's really what you see when you go through the language of that, of that new proposed position, are, you know, expanded references to things like performance-based assessments, expanded uses of competencies for industry credentials, particularly for English language learners. And substitutions of CTE credentials for required verified credits. So you'll see those issues. Another issue that's been fleshed out in that position are a couple of new bullets dealing with modification to the Graduation and Completion Index for English learners. We do have a number of schools that, that have had some issues with, with how English learners, particularly English learners that are new to the country or that have very limited formal schooling, are incorporated into graduation cohorts, and that's had an impact on some of our schools. Okay, on position T on the Standards of Quality, I just wanted to highlight one thing, and I, I felt like I was dating myself when I read this, it only now occurred to me. Oh, no, no, actually, 1973 would really, really date me, but it was the 2002 J-Larke Study of the Standards of Quality. That study was the last time that the state did a comprehensive look at its standards of quality. It's 15 years old now. That's, that's how long it's been since J-Larke, which is Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission, it's the state's kind of research arm, has done a real deep dive on the adequacy and appropriateness of the standards of quality and on other education funding formulas. So it's been a long time since that, that, since that study was done. And when you go back to that study, there were a number of recommendations that were never acted upon, in terms of changes to how education funding worked in Virginia. So it's definitely beyond time that that, that be updated. Okay, I'm going to flip you over to position W on Student Discipline. Two changes there, and really, one is new language and another is putting a little bit more specifics into existing language. One is new language supporting additional state resources for alternatives to suspension and expulsion. And then the other clarification is really highlighting flexibility in terms of determining appropriate discipline for cases that have, you know, that, that may endanger students or staff. This was a very significant discussion during the last General Assembly session, and I think you can be assured that it will be a significant discussion again at the upcoming General Assembly session, in terms of the, the mix and the types of, of discipline that are used, whether it's looking at restrictions on long-term suspensions, or looking at changes in the mix of how younger students are treated through, through discipline. So that definitely will be something that will come up during the next General Assembly session, I just wanted to highlight that for you. Same, similarly on position X under Student Health and Wellness. That's where the school nurses issue falls, and that has been an issue the last few years that the state has been looking at specifically requiring, or specifically mandating either a nurse in per school or a particular ratio of school nurses per, per thousand students. Either, either one of those could have a fairly significant impact on, on Fairfax in terms of how we do business and our partnership with the county, with the county health. To highlight that as an issue that'll come up. Position Z, Student Transportation. There's really two things to highlight there. One is we're eliminating one position because we achieved its objectives, and that had to do with look, being able to look at substitutes for CB radios in buses. So there's now flexibility in the code that allows you to look at technologies other than the specific 1970s era type of technology. And then there's a new position that's been added there. This position has to do with the use of EZ-PASS transponders on our school buses, especially on, on hot lanes, on, on the Beltway. I believe, and I think I'm correct on this, is that those buses are exempt from tolls. However, they still need to use transponders, and there's still an administrative component to it, and they have to be moved from, from vehicle to vehicle. So we're going to look to see if we can get some relief from having to do that, and just have the buses be able to, to access those, those facilities without having to go through the administrative side. All right. Let's see, if we go to Teachers and Instructional Personnel, which is position AA, there's just some language in here that was recommended from, actually from student testing, talking about opposing the use of standardized test scores as a sole or predominant use or a measure of teacher effectiveness. I know that that's been a discussion for, for teacher evaluations, but teacher effectiveness is, is a slightly different metric, and just wanted to include some language in there about that. Down near the bottom, there's a new position, which actually came, came to me from a few, a few members of, of your board, talking about requesting some additional flexibility in the timeline of hiring a superintendent. You know, as you have learned, there are code requirements in terms of how long you have to go through the process.
No offense taken by the board here, by the way.
This board is all about flexibility, so that's all, that's all that, that this is, this is intended to do. But, you know, as I said, as, as you learn, there are specific code requirements in terms of how long you have to go through the process of interviewing and hiring a superintendent. And I think the case can be made that especially for a larger school division like Fairfax, where you do a nationwide search and you employ, you employ search firms and you have onsite visits in multiple locations, that six months sounds like an incredibly long time, but it ends up not being an incredibly long time. So we're going to work with our legislators to see if there's, there's some flexibility that can be built in to that, especially for, for larger school divisions. And finally, not to neglect the federal side of the world, there's one, one change that I wanted to highlight, having to do with E-Rate Funding, because this ties into some of the initiatives, the, the one-to-one initiative for, for Fairfax and getting devices into the hands of students, and also making sure that broadband is deployed. Right now, the E-Rate Funding that we receive through the FCC is limited to hardwired connections. So if you actually run a wire to a building, you can use E-Rate Funding for that, but if you try to use E-Rate Funding for something like a portable MiFi to do, to do wireless internet kinds of connections, or, you know, cellular types of connections, that's not covered under E-Rate. So this is just looking for some flexibility to be able to use that E-Rate Funding, which is not a huge pot of money to begin with, however, every dollar helps, and just to be able to use it in, in the areas where it's the highest priority. And right now, it sounds like the highest priority is to be able to do some of those more wireless and wireless broadband types of initiatives. Those were the positions that I wanted to highlight. As I said, there are changes throughout the program, so, you know, we've, we've tried to highlight them both in the, the proposed changes chart, but also in terms of the, the strike-through and underline that we've provided for you.
Okay, thanks, Michael. So we have three that have questions on this. Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Megan McLaughlin.
Thank you, and thank you, Michael, because many people don't know that you not only work with us and help us have the best legislative agenda possible and are an incredible advocate in Richmond, but you actually are a resource to everybody in Richmond, both other school systems as well as our own local government. So thank you for all you do, it's greatly appreciated. I do have a couple of questions. On page 11, with the new language regarding English language learners, there's two new bullets. One is regarding the six semesters before we would have them join a cohort. And my question there is whether or not, you know, do we have data supporting that it's six semesters, three years of intensive English language, that, why six semesters, not two semesters or five semesters or 10 semesters?
I'm, I'm, I'm not certain that I can tell you the exact reason why six was chosen as opposed to other numbers. Francisco might be able to if, actually, I've got Francisco and Sloan back here, both to, both to back me up on this. I think.
I'm having some microphone issues there.
We're always glad to have you at the table.
Thank you, I appreciate that, it's good to see you. So the idea with the six semesters is that that would give students conceivably enough time to develop English language, really at, at level three. And we do have correlational data that would show that when a student gets to level three, they have a much more realistic chance of being successful on these standardized assessments. So it's really in terms of how much time is it taking students to develop their English language skills that would allow them to, you know, have a realistic chance to be successful on the assessment. So again, the general research is for a student to get completely proficient, it's going to take somewhere between five and seven years.
That's excellent, thank you. So that brings me to the second question regarding the same page, which is that we say, English learners who arrive in Virginia High School, that they would not be counted into the cohort until their second semester. So it seems like we are, there's a disconnect between the two additions, and understanding that would be helpful.
I don't know if, if.
If you go further down?
Yeah, no, there, you do have the two back-to-back. I think that the second bullet is intended to apply to pretty much any student that is, is receiving English language learner, English language instruction that comes in kind of midway through, through the year, so that there's kind of that transition for the first year that they're, for the first year that they're here, whereas the, the previous bullet is more aimed at the students that have not, yeah, that, that have the lower formal schooling and those types of situations.
So I would just suggest that we need some clarifying language between the two, because they could be seen as contradicting or undermining each other. Then we go to page 15, and regarding the student behavior under W. It would be helpful if we had some benchmarking on what the, what would be the appropriate amount of funding for that? You know, how much are we spending to support the, these programs?
I can, I can have that data pulled in terms of what we, what we locally are, are expending. Typically, we don't, at least in terms of the legislative program, we don't include a lot of data, since the data changes from year to year, but in terms of the advocacy that we use, we definitely would need to have that, that number in hand.
Exactly. That's my concern, is that with so many of our legislators asking for more data, give, being able to pull out of our back pocket, real numbers can only help us. And then on page 17, under Z, this is just something to anticipate, that I do know that the Board of Supervisors, when they see about equipping school buses, they are going to raise the concerns over long-arm cameras and student safety. And so that has been percolating a bit more over the weekend, I heard from numerous members of the Board of Supervisors on this issue. And so I would just, we should be ready for it. Now, when we go to the federal piece, thank you, I think it's great, we've got the IDEA and the Impact Aid. One thing that I don't see here is the Medicaid funding, and maybe I missed it, but given that Medicaid funding and actually chip funding is at risk with the current federal administration, do we need to be more specific on those two?
Actually, if you look back, and I'm trying to flip to the correct page, under Special Education, so that's position R, which is back on page nine, I think it's, item three, "The Fairfax County School Board Supports Uniform Set of Rules and Guidelines Allowing School Districts to Claim Administrative and Transportation Expenses Associated with Medicaid Eligible Students." So the Medicaid issue is in the program. I, I, I see your point that it's not specifically called out under the federal part of the position, and that's something that can be easily, easily adjusted, but the, the issue itself is covered under that Special Education position.
I would encourage that we put it under the federal program, and that we also add to that the child health insurance program that has also been cut at the federal level, or there are discussions about it being cut, and so I think that's particularly disconcerting. And we want to make sure that if we can protect that, we should be. And last, and I don't, I'm speaking from ignorance, but I tend to read the NSBA and VSBA memos that go out, and they keep raising the issue of bonds and a new treatment of bonds by the federal government. And so I don't know if that applies to us or not, but if somebody can give me a clarification on that, I'd appreciate it.
The, the initial information that I have in terms of the bonds that they're talking about are not bonds that are used here in, in Fairfax. I believe they're referred to as Qualified Zone Academy Bonds, and those have some very specific requirements in terms, they're really used more in impoverished urban areas, and it's, so we don't make use of that, we make use more of the, the general obligation bonds through the county. So it does, at least our initial take on it is that those changes wouldn't necessarily have a direct impact on us. It would have an impact on the bonding market, but not a direct impact on FCPS.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Megan, Sandy, then Tammy, or sorry, Janie.
So, obviously, there's a lot here, and timing-wise for my colleagues, I'm just going to zero in, because I'm just mindful that we just don't have enough time to dialogue with each other, but to item number X, Student Health and Wellness, and I point to page 16 at the top, I, I am concerned that as the largest school division in Virginia, what we lobby for has a ripple effect across the state. And our language, to me, is, is concerning. The board received an email from the Virginia Nurses Association in September with their recommendations on their public policy platform, and what, number two of their three positions was to improve student access to school nurses to ensure Virginia's youth, youth is healthy, safe and ready to learn. And everything that we know about learning and what we have been espousing in our portrait of a graduate is educating the whole child. And if health and wellness are not a component of it, then a child's ability to learn can be affected. In the position, the School Nurses Association points out that currently, the Virginia Board of Education recommends one public school nurse for every 900, they recommend one for every 550 students. Statistically, right now in the Commonwealth, it's one for every 923. In Fairfax County, the ratio is closer to 1,3000. So we are so grossly off from what is recommended by the, the SOQs, grossly off of even the state average. And yet, Michael, this language, I, I guess I'd first like to understand, while I know your role is to protect our local autonomy on things, if I were a state delegate or a state senator, I would think, oh, Fairfax County, leading district is telling us, leave us alone, we got it all covered. And that's not where I think we need to go. We have under SOQs psychologists and social workers, and we have to keep working at making sure that we have best practice in our buildings to educate the whole child. And so I, I recognize that the board as a whole hasn't necessarily brought this issue to you and said, I think we need to rethink this, but I guess I would like to better understand, because this is our legislative package and you are lobbying on behalf of the board, on behalf of the division, help me understand, why is this language not taking us in the direction of saying, you know, yes, we, we recognize that there isn't state funding here, and that's what needs to be coming through, as opposed to just sort of saying that, you know, we, you know, we recognize that we, we, we own a piece of it too. I don't know, it, I'm, I'm just a little worried, it just, the language here kind of doesn't, I think, highlight the fact that not just Fairfax County schools, but statewide, no one's making this an important priority, and I'm worried we're communicating the wrong message down in Richmond.
Well, I guess to your first point is, is just to recall that this is the board's language, that, you know, I operate based on this language. This language gives me guidance when I'm down in Richmond talking to legislators, but at the end of the day, this is, this is the language of the board, and, and it may not have been this board, that language, I recognize that language from years past, so that language has been in the legislative program for a long time. Now, in terms of the specific issue, I know one of the reasons why that language has been there, you talked a little bit about local autonomy and in terms of being able to make the, the, the decision that best fits the local situation. Anytime I've seen numbers run on the expense that would be required to switch us over to these kinds of ratios, that the numbers are fairly, fairly significant. So it's, you know, this does fall under the rubric of a pretty significant unfunded mandate from the state, even as the recommendations are right now.
So that, to me, then, is where, to my colleagues, if we're going to be authentic in our commitment and our conversation with our community about educating the whole child, ensuring that we close achievement gaps. You can't close gaps if our kids aren't healthy, well, and, and able to learn and succeed in the school day. And all of the research is showing that school nurses play a vital role in ensuring the health and wellness and the success of students. And so, you know, Michael, I appreciate your honesty, that this language has been here, we're not sure how long, but it's, that the board owns it, regardless of if staff drafted it, if it's, but it's for our review and for us to own it. And I, I will, I guess what I wanted to say with, to everybody is, my goal is to revise this language and, you know, bring an amendment to the legislative package, is that my goal, what the process would be, for me to bring revised language and then have my colleagues during the legislative package vote decide if we want to revise the language for that section?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's probably the most transparent way to do it.
Yeah. So I, you know, and I, I do plan on doing my best to talk with basically Teresa Johnson out of Special Services, because she's got the liaison for school nurses on her side of the shop, and then we have Dr. Gloria over in Public Health, who is our Public Health Director, but I, I think we need to basically update the language here, and what I would like to see with the board's support through professional recommendations is, we need to be lobbying Richmond and saying, stop. is we need to be lobbying Richmond and saying, stop telling us, you know, that you recognize the value of the health and wellness of students. You give us ratios, but there's no funding in it. And there needs to be funding, not just in Fairfax County, but for all of the school divisions. And I think we should be leading voices on that. But, you know, I'll just give you one example and I'll move off of this. But, you know, when the Scottsdale Unified School Division outside of Phoenix, and Arizona is not known for its investment in public education either. But when they're able to have a public nurse in, in all of their schools, and we've got one per 3,000 roughly, we are so antiquated when it comes to ensuring, again, the health and supports. And as we move as a county toward community schools and wraparound services, the school nurses become even more important. But then the increase in 504s, the increase in IEPs and the health conditions that our students have, this is a really important investment. And I do think the numbers are a piece of it, Michael, and you really captured it. Unfunded mandates, we're not going to go lobbying for. But if we don't bring dollars and I think some numbers to it to help the state understand this is how dramatic the burden will be, and this is why the General Assembly needs to start dedicating money toward it, then maybe we can channel the Virginia Nurses Association with Michael, with VSBA, you know, being able to kind of champion and say, you need to be funding this because you give ratios alone is not good enough.
I'll refer you, and I was just scrolling back through this. If you, if you look at position number two in that exact same, in that exact same position, it does get, at least indirectly at that issue, it does talk about supporting significantly increased state resources for local school divisions to implement mandated student physical and mental health initiatives. That, I mean, that can be anything from EP pens to, you know, the types of things you're talking about in terms of school nurses or in terms of, you know, supports for 504 plans. So at least it's there. It may not be as explicit as I think you may be looking for it, but that support still is mentioned very specifically, but not in terms of the ratios or the specific requirements from the state.
And I appreciate that. I think that in order to help our legislators who, like the school board, we're, you know, they're overwhelmed with this volume of information. And so where we can be more intentional in our legislative package and saying, here's a very clear and specific goal, that maybe that'll, that'll help move the ball further from where we are right now, especially when we're talking about a funding request. You know, really telling them that they need to make this part of their budgetary priorities. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks Megan. Next Sandy, then Janie.
So thank you again for a very thorough legislative package. I did want to go back to page 11. I do think that the pieces on accreditation are critical. And I'm very glad to see the new language that you've developed here. And that would be wonderful if we could get that. Whose purview is that in? Is that, would it be the legislature? Would it be VDOE? Would it be a combination of the two? Who do we need to lobby to get this done?
You can go in multiple directions. At the end of the day, it is, the Graduation and Completion Index is the, under the purview of the Virginia Board of Education. So it falls under their regulatory scheme. So you can go directly to them to talk about it, which is something that FCPS has been doing for, I mean, as you're aware, a number of years, we've been talking to them about the situation of some of our schools and required flexibility or requested flexibility. So you can go directly to them through the regulatory process. The other way to go is you can actually go through the General Assembly. You can actually have legislation that requests that the Virginia Board of Education do, does something. The, in some ways, that's an end, it's an end around if the Board of Education's not acting. One advantage of doing that is that legislation that passes through the General Assembly is considered an exempt regulatory action. So once the legislation passes the General Assembly, then the State Board of Education has to incorporate those changes into their regulations. And it doesn't have to go through the 18-month APA process of public comment and drafting and redrafting and governor's comments and attorney general's comments, and which, you know, makes the regulatory process a very cumbersome process to access. Now, in terms of the Graduation and Completion Index, it would be a matter of, I would want to go to the Board of Education to see how, and how difficult the process of changing that is because I don't, they don't fall under the rubric of the standards of accreditation, which is really where they're doing most of their regulatory work right now. It's considered a separate category, but I don't know how formal the regulations around the Graduation and Completion Index are. So you can go any of those routes. And, you know, we've been talking to people about this for a number of years.
And I think we've gotten some, we've made headway in terms of people understanding the issue with ELLs. And I guess I can have a, an offline conversation with you about, about some of this because there may be that some areas of Virginia don't have the same issues that we have and may not be fully aware of, of this kind of a need. So we have to be cognizant of that, too. Keeping to the same issue, it would be great to have all of our ESOL students, new to us, go to the cohort after six semesters. Have we considered saying, if we can't do that, then at least have that be for the students with interrupted education? I don't see, unless I'm missing it, I don't see anything specifically referencing the students with interrupted education.
That may actually be because the discussion earlier was about kind of clarifying those two bullets. That may be part of the clarification of what that, that first bullet's ask is, is to more specifically reference students with limited, limited formal schooling.
Well, don't misunderstand me. I have no problem with the way it's written now. I'm thinking in terms of an addition, that if, if they couldn't go that far, that perhaps, at least for students who come here with, with little education in their home country and are entering ninth grade as 17-year-olds, that that's, that's simply a different situation than somebody coming to us who has, has had 10 years of education just in another language. So we might want to add something to that. I wouldn't eliminate what you've got there, but I'm just thinking we might want to add something. So with that, just another thing that I, and just one more question. And when some of us were down there at the legislature last year, I'm not sure, I don't remember who it was, if it was Dahlia or Karen. Somebody was in the audience at one point and somebody asked them, was it you Dahlia?
Yeah, it's around the meals tax.
Right. And so somebody just said, oh, you want to cut up and talk about it? So I think if, if we are going to do that, we should be prepared for that. I didn't realize that anybody would, would do that with a board member, just ask them to come up and speak.
Obviously, it's hard to predict this, Mr. Malloy knows, but when we can.
But I think we should at least be aware that that's a possibility. And maybe that's something that we need to actually prepare for. And maybe go down with the intention that some of us would speak to an issue that we care deeply about. So just something, food for thought as we prepare for the legislative session.
It definitely is a possibility because, and particularly when you're, you're aware of the process that they use at the subcommittee level, that's where these kind of less formal discussions happen. So it's really kind of the first reading of a piece of legislation. And that's where, if you're an audience member, you do have the opportunity to be able to get up and speak.
Maybe we need to do that more. Yeah?
If I could just share two things. One, I can't remember, and I don't see Chris Donahue-Francois for the Bray Bran briefing. We, we sent two letters to Dr. Staples around this EL stuff. He responded back about three weeks ago going, great info, we're willing to review it. We'd had a conference call with him. I felt a little bit like it was a review pending what would happen. He just announced his retirement. So frankly, we've already, I've already talked, I have a meeting with Francisco Wednesday about what our next steps are to reengage him beyond the Board of Education level, at the state superintendent level. What can we do to be the model school district in Virginia for how we handle EL kids? I think there's still a real interest. So I don't want you to think this is off the table. We have our eye on the ball, just waiting really for sort of the dust to settle, maybe another week. The other I just want to say is, I'm certainly supportive of working with this school board and going down. I think now more than ever, it's time to send a strong message in Richmond. And there will be a lot of folks willing to listen around the meals tax. I left a city to come to a county. And the bottom line is that city, because it is a city, even though it's far smaller, less kids, has less tools to be able to manage its revenue for schools. And I think it's time for that conversation to become front and center in Virginia public education. And we'd be willing to do anything with this board to help support that.
Now we have Janie, followed by Tammy.
Thank you. And thank you, Michael. And of course, as we've said, everybody depends on you and your great knowledge of everything. I know other school divisions, the county, and everybody else depends on your input. So, and you try very hard to be at least at four places at 7:30 in the morning. So thank you very, very much. Couple of things. I'm very pleased with, with the layout of this and the suggestions that you've made and, and a number of things that we've been talking about in the last couple of months. You've put them in here, so I think this is great. NS, where we talk about the assessments, et cetera. And a lot of it is, was part of, I believe, the State Innovation Committee's work. And so where do we stand now that we've had all, some changes in the, in the delegates? With the change in assessments and accountability and yada, yada? We don't know.
That is actually a very interesting question. And I think we have somebody who was, who is actually sitting at the table while that was happening. But just to give a little bit of background, the ESOL Innovation Committee had a number of recommendations in front of it. But the way the ESOL Innovation Committee is structured, you actually had to have a majority vote from the citizen members on that committee as well as a majority vote from the legislative members on that committee.
And it was the legislators that didn't vote for it. So where do we stand now?
There were a few issues. At least, at least one, two, I think two members that were on that ESOL Innovation Committee.
Two and one, the is in a recount.
And one is in a, yeah. So it is entirely possible that those issues are going to be revisited. And they may also be revisited just directly through the General Assembly. Because when you, as I said, even if you locked everything in place today, you have a 51-49 split. That's going to make people who are right there in the center very, very interesting and very busy people because lots of people are going to talk to them about a lot of things. Because 51-49 is easy to make 49-51 if you talk to the right people. So some of those issues, and some of those issues, I think, do have some degree of bipartisan support.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, so those discussions may, may end up turning out a little bit differently if you take them back to the General Assembly with the new configuration as opposed to the previous.
And I'll add one thing to that. Even though as a committee, we vote, we voted separately, one thing that I asked and the committee supported, even the legislators, that we would submit the full report to the legislature. So even though it was moved forward as not recommended, it will still be moved forward so that the legislatures on whatever side, newly elected or not, can still see the work that we spent the last year on. So it'll be at least moved forward in that way.
And thank you for the work that you've done on that committee. That was significant. So it really helped us all.
And it truly was on the committee side of the citizen members was bipartisan support. And there was a lot of discussion on that. So I don't want to make it into a partisan issue because when it was the citizen members that were appointed, we voted unanimously and we're a bipartisan group of citizen members.
Great. Thank you very much. With regard to, again, asking for a J-Larke study, again, does it, I mean, with the changes, might, and the fact that the, it's my understanding that the financial outlook is better and whether or not we actually would get a J-Larke study?
It's unclear. One, I think one reason why you haven't seen an update to the J-Larke study is when you look at the original J-Larke study, the price tag was pretty substantial in terms of the changes that they were recommending. And I think that there is just a general fear that you do another study, you're going to get another substantial price tag.
Sure.
You know, and I, and I think there, there are so many places that you can point to in terms of how the standards of quality are structured and how that relates to what you all are doing here on the ground in terms of actual staffing and how much of a divergence there are, there is between those two worlds. That there really isn't a way that they could do the study, there wouldn't be a significant price. And that's, I think that's really part of the reason why they don't, they haven't gone forward with it.
Reluctant to go there.
It's entirely possible that, you know, again, given the new configuration. However, I will tell you that when you, and you've been seeing all the news media about, about kind of the issues that people ran on and the issues that were important, healthcare is by far the number one issue that will probably take a lot of the discussion up in Richmond. You know, that's, that's really, I think, will be the primary place where an awful lot of folks are going to want to focus their energies. Not to say that education's not going to be important. This is a re-benchmarking year. So there, there will be a discussion of education funding for certain, and we will not obviously let it not be part of the conversation. But I do think that in terms of when people look at why they were sent to Richmond, that may be the first thing they look at in terms of healthcare.
Well, that brings me back to the issue that Ms. McLaughlin raised and nurses. Because for us, it's the health department that pays for the nurses. And I would think that that would be a great, and I don't know where the Board of Supervisors are because it comes out of their budget. We obviously have our clinic rooms and all the rest of that. But in terms of healthcare, whether or not greater funding for the public health departments, which then fund the nurses, which then help with resources for schools, whether or not that is the way to go at it. Because we've always been reluctant, we don't want to be, we don't want to have to bear the cost of the nurses since we've always had this arrangement with the Board of Supervisors. But I think coming in from the healthcare side, and certainly we know that downstate, particularly Southwest Virginia, where, you know, we watch every year the free clinic and we go, my God, why aren't, why aren't those people offered better healthcare options? But I guess that's my question, whether or not that, with the issue of nurses in public schools and health departments, whether or not that is a better way to come in with that.
That is, I mean, that is definitely one approach to take to it. However, I will tell you that, based on my understanding, that different school divisions have different structures.
Right, I know.
Some of the school nurses are direct employees of the school system as opposed to being public health.
Whereas ours are not.
Yeah, so, so you're not capturing that whole universe of school health services by just focusing in on the one. But, you know, definitely for our situation here and how we're structured, that would be the place to, to really talk about it is in terms of the public health side.
Yeah, because that's always part of the difficulties, that the structures are different throughout the state. So I think that covers my topics. But again, thank you very much for all of the changes and bringing up to date. And again, I see many of the things, obviously, we need, we need to talk about recess. But other than that, I see a lot of the other things already captured. So thank you.
Okay, we have Tammy, followed by Neerika.
Thank you, Michael, for all your good work on this and all the staff members who contributed. I don't have much, I just want to clarify on, I don't have much different from one of my colleagues, I should say. Sloan, I want to thank you for the clarification on the Graduation Completion Index. But I agree with Ms. Evans that we, because the schools that she represents, the schools that I represent, we most definitely see a, a different kind of student and the intensity. So that kind of language that Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned, I, you know, I think you understand what, what we're looking for because while that language kind of is illustrative of what the perfect student would be, we would kind of get them at grade level, we would have them go through this, and, and they would be performing at the top level. I think there still has to be some flexibility when we see that 16, is Ms. Evans? Yes, that maybe the minimum, using some words like that, minimum. Or because when we see, you know, I have a, Ms. Evans and I probably have the two highest schools that receive the higher-aged teenagers coming in with, are site students. So how we can work to ensure that they understand, you know, this would be the minimum, that would be the best-case scenario. And there's other, there, there may be other funding issues there. So however, we can work on that. I think you both, Sloan and Michael, understand.
Yeah, I think if there's board consensus, we're happy to work on the language on this. It could be something as simple as just adding, you know, particularly in cases where a student has no or limited formal schooling.
Right.
Just an addition like that would help to highlight the issue that you're talking about, but also keep the more general advocacy there. But yeah, it's definitely something that we can, we can work on the wording for.
Good. When we talk on, I would like to change our thinking and verbiage on this. We are not, we are never going to talk about a meals tax any longer. We are going to talk about a children's fund, a children's educational fund. And we have been talking about that in SCIPP. We have had successful communities out west in particular. We have had successful communities out west in particular, that the moderator of the SCIP committee and the consultant to that, to that working group. And I think that the success and that's a, if you think about it, that was kind of a, you know, it was, it was a kind of a, it is, it would be a addition and an opportunity for those seeking meals outside of their home to invest in a children's fund. But we, I think it's really important that we no longer refer to it as that and no longer promote that, a children's education fund, because that's exactly what those monies are for. And let's talk about what they're for rather than what, how we're going to get them. And we can get them from multiple sources, but that was the one. So I'd like to do that. And, Michael, and I know this probably doesn't have to be before, but when, and I assume Ryan and I will go before the delegation, before they go off to Richmond, and that's like in January, is that, or when is that?
December 5th.
No, 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 I'm not talking about our meeting. I'm talking about when they sit at the Board of Supervisors' table and people-
Yeah, it's the Saturday, it's the Saturday prior to session. The session is the second, starts the second Wednesday of January.
Okay.
So it's that Saturday prior.
So prior to that meeting for our entire board, you have done an excellent job in the past of having that one pager talk about, you know, where we are in relation to, you know, benchmarking into 2009 funding level, where we are when it comes to if we were, if we just took out our children in poverty, where we would stand, how, that kind of an updated chart like that is very, very beneficial to promoting our, and even for some of us, you know, if we could see the increase in the children that we mentioned, I think that's important, that we have real numbers on the children new to our community in the past years and how they've grown several percentage points as far as the amount of need, like our, the number of SCIF students, the number, and how our poverty rate has trended over. I think that's important. Because I really like the modified language in Page 1 about where we are and the strong statements about, you know, how it puts a burden on the localities and the state is really responsible. But the state has been always very good at saying, you know, we support education, but we are 43rd in the nation, and clarify that for us. 43rd out of 50 states is not, you know, imagine how much better we could be off if we even bumped up 10 points on that, on that scale. So if that number can be clarified in that one pager and all of those things, I think those are really the kind of succinct points we will have at our fingertips and are good when we're talking to our delegates.
You'll be very happy to learn that I have a meeting on Wednesday to talk about exactly that, the updated numbers.
Perfect.
Because a lot of those numbers are based on the September 30th pupil counts, which have not, I'm not sure if they're out yet, but I know they're expected any time now. So once we get that updated number, then we'll-
Well, we've seen them, like I know I've seen them from my district, so yeah, so, but I don't know, Dr. Bray, when are they official? Are they official already, or, I know September 30th they come out and then there's a-
Yeah, the September 30th is Gen Ed, and then the Special Ed are certified in December. So I'm thinking what, it's probably going to be another month before we have the final, final count, and we can get that to you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay, we have only five minutes left, but we have other things to go through and we still have people that want to speak. So Nehirika, then Dahlia.
Okay, I'm going to be brief. This is my first time in this process, but I have a few questions.
Sure.
In point, in Section X, Student Wellness, there's a point three about childhood obesity, but why haven't we included language about, like, really clearly supporting our, supporting that we support mental health and suicide prevention? Because I see the point three about obesity, but there isn't really like a corresponding item for mental health.
Yeah, mental health is referred to a couple of different times in that, in the full position, but not specifically in that one. That position, I think, historically has been just focused on the issue of childhood obesity. So what you would need to do is you'd need to either expand that position or add a separate position that specifically talked about, about student mental health.
Okay. And a second question in Section S, number 16. Our position is to like have more electives count as graduation requirements, but is there a way we could make that more specific to subject areas? For example, like counting computer science courses towards math requirements?
There actually is, there's flexibility right now to allow computer science courses, and I'm not sure how many courses, but I know that there was some flexibility built in to allow computer science to count towards either a math or a science credit. The example that I hear oftentimes is like practical nursing in terms of a CTE course. That has a very heavy science component that would be used as a possible substitute for one of the required science credits. Just so everyone is aware, the State Board is actually changing the configuration a little bit in terms of graduation requirements on the standards of accreditation. They're not changing the required number of courses necessarily, but they are changing some of the courses that have to be verified by SOLs. That's been one barrier to some of these requirements, or one reason why some of these requirements have stayed in place is because you actually had to have an SOL test attached to it. They're getting somewhat away from that idea of verifying credits only by SOL tests, and they're allowing other means of verification, but they're also reducing the number of credits that even need to be verified. So that's going to give us more flexibility, and it's really, it's the State Board of Education that makes those decisions in terms of looking at the content of a course and saying, yeah, we think that based on the syllabus, that this could be considered a math course, or this could be considered a science course. And it's something we have been engaged with the State Board and Department of Education on, on some of those specific courses. I know we've made some requests. I don't know where, where those requests have been. I know that we've made requests on specific courses, but I don't know where they are in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dahlia.
Thank you, yes, Michael, briefly. Couple of questions, touching on one, a couple of my colleagues said. Number one, on the GCI, and I guess the same thing for my second question, is it possible for us to get a sense of which other Virginia district, school districts are highly impacted as we start to look at strategy and who we want to partner with on that?
I mean, I can, I can give you an idea. I know that Henrico's been engaged with us on this conversation. They've sat in on some of the meetings with us. Interestingly enough, the, probably in terms of percentages, I think it's Harrisonburg City that is the most impacted by, by English-language learners of all school divisions in Virginia. In terms of percentages, obviously, we have a lot more students than they do, but in terms of the percentage of their students that are affected. And then I think when you look in the Tidewater area, you'd see Virginia Beach, and you'd see some of those other larger school divisions that have a lot of, you know, a lot of transient populations that would be very interested in talking to us. And that's something we, you know, we do engage in regularly to talk to them.
Okay, so I guess I'm not, I don't know if the board would agree, but, you know, if you're able to maybe give us that list, and we on our end can also, you know, I know some are going to VSBA, I cannot this year, but start to network for their board members.
Yeah, we can pull numbers.
And in fact, the Harrisonburg rep from the Virginia School Board Association was president two years ago, wasn't it, Kelly?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
We can get, we'll get her name before you guys go down.
Okay.
And Scott Kizner's the superintendent there. I worked with Scott in Region 5. He's very dynamic, very strong, and I think there'd be a great partnership there with the Valley school divisions, where they have a lot, their portion, a percentage of EL learners is significant to ours. It's just a size piece. But the percent is very, very, very high.
And we can pull both. We can pull sheer numbers, so we can pull kind of the top number of school divisions that have a lot of students. We can also pull the top percentage school, school divisions.
And would there also be some that outlier, like they have one high school that's really impacted but nowhere else, or not really?
I'm not sure we'd be able to get to that data. I don't know if the, if the English-language learner data that the Department of Ed has really would get that finely grained. However, something to remember is that, you know, in the chart that Ms. Darin X. Kofax was talking about, we do compare our largest schools, individual schools, to entire school divisions. And we have, I think, our top high school would be about the 78th or 79th largest school division in Virginia if it was by itself.
Right.
So you are talking about a lot of school divisions that have very small numbers of schools.
Right, no, I understand that, just, but if the impact to them is so high, maybe we can find some new partners outside of Northern Virginia for that. So thank you.
Exactly.
And then my other one, I was thinking along the same lines as Ms. Darin X. Kofax, even, you know, when we start to look at local funding possibilities, especially looking at a new legislature next year, whether it's dedicated to pre-K, which I know some cities have done, you know, sometimes there's pushback to local funding into the big pot. But if, you know, would, if we're open to having it to specific programs, whether it be mental health support or pre-K programs or others, I don't know if you feel like that would help the cause?
I think anything you can do to move the, move the needle would be helpful, you know, whether it's dedicated, whether it's, you know, general, general obligation, anything that you can do to, to kind of push the, that envelope in terms of additional sources of revenues certainly would be helpful.
And I guess I'm asking, while you're down there and in the know, if you do start to see some patterns of areas that could receive additional support, if you could let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Okay, we do have people from the county waiting for the next session, so I'm going to hold on go-bags for a minute. Michael, can you go to the recess piece?
Yes.
And send us the proposed language for that.
Well, I've, I've-
And provide background.
I, there actually is not draft language because it wasn't, I mean, I know that the issue has been discussed, but I wasn't, I didn't have any guidance in terms of specifically where, where the board might want to go with that language. So without, in the absence of that guidance, it's difficult to draft specific language. I know the issue is, in terms of being able to use recess as a possibility of having recess count towards instructional time. Yeah, I'd need a little bit more guidance from, from kind of where the board was going with that before I could come up with language, which I'm more than happy to do.
Sorry, I thought I had been clear in my, my communications with both you and Scott about that. So anyway, we do need staff to draft language on this because I think there's considerable interest on the board. So people need to be brief because, again, we have people waiting in the audience, but I'll take comments on this. Sandy, Megan, and Karen.
And we have gotten some draft language from the advocates on this, so we can, that might be a good starting point for you in any event. And just the history of this is that recess used to be included in instruction time. It was not that long ago that the, the state changed it and took out, and recess. So it was a very small, you know, it was a two-word change. So this, historically, recess used to be included in instruction time. So I think we would just be asking them to go back to the time when it was included. And I do support advocating for that.
Francisco, did you want to weigh in now?
Yes, as we've talked about this before, and ISD has done a lot of research on this, we do have some language that we have available that we could share, that we, you know, to show. But the essence of it is that we advocate for removing the current time percentage that's required and allow local school districts the ability for the core content areas to set that. And so it's a little more detailed than that, but we do have that language that we can share with, I'm not sure the appropriate at this point because it's at the table right now, but we do have that language.
Okay, great. Megan, Karen.
Francisco, that's great. I think that, just as I was mentioning, some draft language maybe for school nurses, I think we still have the time and opportunity to have that language drafted, circulated to the board, and then we'll have time to be able to work on that. I think, from what I have heard and understood, and Sandy, thank you for really providing that clarity that Francisco echoed it as well, it's not like we're proposing something new. This used to be the case. The state then, in their infinite wisdom, thought they were improving things. Clearly, they're not. And I, so I'm hopeful that providing rather simple change, that it won't cause everybody down in Richmond to get all knotted up on this thing, but without question, we have really benefited from the advocates in the community doing a lot of research, looking at other states within the US who are able to accomplish this. And I think it's absolutely essential that we lobby hard and passionately on fixing this from, for the recess standpoint. Again, and then Mr. McNamee, and I'll wait for my quick go-back. Oh, the other quick go-back that I just wanted to point out is I do support Nehirika on getting draft language under Section X of Student Wellness to have a specific bullet on mental health like we have on childhood obesity. And then I do want to just point out to some of my colleagues who brought this up, just like the school division and the state have SOQs on social workers and psychologists, there's no difference then for nurses. And so I am hopeful that as we get this going, that as a board, we become as educated as possible and we don't create false narratives that, well, school nurses aren't really our problem, because they are absolutely as essential as the social workers and psychologists for helping our students with success.
Okay, Karen, you'll have the last word on this.
Francisco, I look forward to seeing the language on recess because I do think it's important to go ahead and reintroduce the obligation to have recess. I think we started along these lines last week when we changed the language within our own regs to ensure that we don't have the, getting rid of recess as a penalty for kids. However, I do think we have to be careful in how we couch the language on recess to ensure people understand that we're asking for flexibility in how we provide the Core Four, but that we still are cognizant that kids need recess, and that's different than perhaps a standard physical education time, because that seems, that tends to be more structured, whereas recess should be unstructured time so that kids can relax, but not to minimize the Four Core.
And to Ms. Corbett Sanders' point, the State Board of Education, as part of its SOA work, actually is, has included a modified definition of recess that they will be considering and voting on on Thursday. And recess, they're amending their, the use of the term recess to say that it means it's a segment of free time exclusive of time provided for meals during the standard school day in which students are given a break from structured classroom instruction. So they've, that will become part, assuming that the State Board has kept that, as of their vote on Thursday, that terminology with structured classroom instruction will be included as part of the SOA definition of recess.
Okay, so we'll make sure that we have that, that language from staff, working with Michael, to have that come forward as an amendment at the table when the board adopts this, along with, with other suggested amendments. I know Megan has one on the student, student health, and potentially some others on nurses. So anyway, going forward, Michael, briefly tell us the timeline for board adoption of the program.
This actually is, I believe, on your, on your final action at your Monday meeting. So a week from, week from today, it's up for final action.
Okay, and then we'll present it to our delegation on the 5th. So with that, Michael, when do you want amendments?
We'll start working on them immediately.
Okay.
So that we can get them incorporated. But if you have specific language that you want to share, I'm happy to work with whoever to, to get things put together.
Right, so three days in advance of the Monday meeting, so Thursday, this Thursday, yeah. Okay, you guys do that offline. Eileen, do we have any next steps?
Okay. Goodness. Okay, can everyone please review these and make sure these read as you wish them to?
Number one, clarifying language between two proposals on Page 11, including the concept of a minimum. Karen, is that right?
A concept that the six semesters should be considered a minimum for students with interrupted education.
Okay.
Does that make sense for you, Ms. Evans? Maybe even?
Um, I guess, well, I think we could, we could bifurcate that a little bit and say, well, we, I think what Michael was going to do was work on language on students with interrupted education rather than us specifying now.
That was where I was coming from originally.
Right. Because I'm, I'm fine with the six semesters as it is, but I think we need something else, something more on, on students with interrupted education. So maybe we could make that more general.
So, including- So, cons, or, including-
Language on students with interrupted education.
Right.
How about that?
Yeah, that works.
And, because, with the understanding of, yeah.
Okay, the next one's yours, Karen, as well, benchmarks to new proposal on page 15.
Yeah, that was funding benchmarks for the new language.
But that, just to clarify-
And that wouldn't be in our-
That would not be additional language for the program, that would simply be available for advocacy.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, the next one's yours as well, page 17, under the Ad Child Health Insurance Program.
Under 17, that's for the federal program, I believe.
Right, okay.
And I don't, and what we were asking for there-
Would the guidance there, that was the issue where there was the Medicaid position in this, under special education-
Correct.
-but not under federal.
Correct.
Would you want the Medicaid position moved out from under special education and put under the federal position? Or do you want to have it in both places?
I would leave it in both places-
Okay.
...because it comes up in both places.
Okay, so this would be in addition to the federal position of the Medicaid-
Correct.
-as well as the CHIP.
Child health, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, McLaughlin, yeah?
I, I know I wasn't here for this part of the discussion, but if we could, I, I would like language based on, from our Board of Supervisors, for those who were there, to specifically request increased additional funding for the disproportionate burden that we have in the state for the ESOL students. I think I did 14.6% of the students, but 35.2% of the ESOL students, or something.
We've incorporated that a little bit more explicitly, both in the joint position, as well as in the body of the position as well.
You specifically asked for more money?
Yes, additional resources, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, McLaughlin, that capture you?
No, I just, I, it wasn't student ratio, it's going to be state funding.
Okay. Tammy's out of the room, Dahlia, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Michael.
Okay, the next one will do the recess piece, that draft language, and finally, the language on mental health services. Okay, okay. Hearing and seeing no issue with any of those next steps, we will move forward with those, and this work session is adjourned, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Since we have a couple of visitors from county who have been waiting for us for more than 45 minutes, that we're, I'm not going to ask board members to leave the table, but just to, instead, have a flip the tape to record the next session, and invite the visitors from the county to come to the front. I'm doing this part, you're doing P and L.
Yeah?
Yeah.